Good morning, good morning. God bless you. Thank you for joining us today. I am Pastor Lavina Smith, pastor of the New Mount Olive Baptist Church, Wilmington, Delaware. And we greet you today with Jesus' joy, because the joy of the Lord is our strength. This morning, we are going to continue in our Word with part three, with part three of our information on the Bible. But let us bow our heads in prayer before we begin. Father, I stretch my hands to Thee. No other help I know. If Thou withdraw Thyself from us, where shall we go? Father, we thank You for being our Lord, our Savior, and our God. We thank You for early rise this morning. We thank You, Lord, because we know it was nothing but Your grace and Your mercy that allowed us to wake up into time and not into eternity. Lord, we thank You for being able to get up and to get dressed, Father God. We thank You for having food to eat. We thank You, Father God, that the family circle this morning has not yet been broken. God, we ask that You continue to bless us and keep us, that You continue to shine Your countenance upon us and allow us to be the men and women, boys and girls, that You have appointed us to be. Now, as we study, Lord, open our minds and our hearts that we might be receptive, excuse me, to Your Word. Father, we thank You, because we learned a long time ago that we cannot do this without You. We need You, Lord, every day and every hour. We need You to walk with us and talk with us. We need You to lead and guide us in the path of righteousness. And then, Lord, every now and then anoint our heads with oil and allow our cups to overflow, so we can say like David said, surely goodness and mercy shall follow us all the days of our lives, that we might dwell in the house of the Lord forever and ever. Father, we thank You for this time. It is in Jesus' name that we pray with thanksgiving. And those who believe all joined me and said, "Amen." Amen. We've been talking the past few weeks about the Bible. And we had shared with you certain scriptures. We said that the Bible was very important. And we had shared with you 2 Timothy 3:16 and 17, that all scripture is given by inspiration of God and is profitable for doctoring, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness, that the man of God may be perfect, thoroughly furnished unto all good works. We studied and we learned that Timothy 2:14 tells us very clearly that we should study, "To show thyself approved unto God, a workman that needed not to be ashamed, but rightly dividing the word of truth." And it says, "But shun profane and vain babbles, and they will increase unto more ungodliness; and their word will eat as thus a canker, of whom is Hymanias and Philipus, who concerning the truth hath aired, saying that the resurrection is past already, and overthrew the faith of some." We added proverbs to our scripture. So today, if you would be kind enough to add again proverbs, we're looking at proverbs, the ninth chapter and the ninth and tenth verses, proverbs, chapters nine and ten. These words have been recorded. Give instruction to a wise man, and he will yet, and he will be yet wiser. Teach a just man, and he will increase in learning. Verse 10, the fear, which is what we had last week for our scripture, the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. And the knowledge of the Holy is understanding. We look and we ask ourselves several questions. And we learned this morning, just from looking at Timothy, that the Lord has given us instructions. He has given us this scripture that has been inspired by God, has been given, as you have learned, to over forty authors who wrote about this scripture. You've learned also that this B-I-B-L-E, which lets us know that there are two testaments. We said it was the Old Testament and the New Testament. We said that between the first book in the Bible, which is Genesis in the Old Testament, and it ends in Malachon. We also said that in the New Testament, the Bible begins with Matthew and it ends with Revelation. We pointed out to you that there is no S on Revelation, so therefore it is Revelation and not Revelations. We have told you several important things, longest verse, shortest verse, longest book, shortest book. You've learned several great informational points about the Bible. And so we want you to just be reminded that the Bible, if we ask the question, "What is the Bible?" The Bible is literally God-breathed. It is a book that has been correlated or authored by over forty people, and it comes from words that were inspired by God. It also lets us know that we ask the question today, why do we believe the Bible is God's Word? Why do we believe that the Bible is God's Word? And it says to us that we believe that the Bible is the Word of God because of what He has told us in 2 Timothy 3, verses 16 and 17, about it being God-breathed. And then we ask the question this morning, why should we read and study the Bible? It says that we should read and study the Bible because God does not change. You know, many times in our lives, we have things that will change. Our homes will change. We will move from one house to another. Our jobs change. We get different jobs spasmodically. We also, we change our friends. Because if you remember, from the friends you had in middle school and high school, and even the friends you had in college, some of them might not be some of the friends that you have now. So things change. I'm so glad today to know that God does not change. And so we have, even our situations, our children, our personalities, they change. But the Lord is telling us in the book of 1 Samuel 15 and 29 that He does not lie or change His mind. He also tells us in Malachi 3 and 6 that I, the Lord, do not change. And because mankind's nature, we change, we have to rest and praise God with the blessed assurance that He will not change. Amen? And so we are grateful. In addition, it tells us that we should, so why should we read and study this Bible? Because the Word tells us that in 2 Timothy 2:15. Now, the question might come up and says, how do you prove that the Bible is true? Well, in the book of Genesis 1:1, it is very clear when Genesis 1:1 tells us that in the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth. All right. And the earth was without form, and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep; and the Spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters. So this helps us to prove the Bible is true. And as I had told you in a previous lesson some time ago, take time to read through Genesis 1 so that you can see what has happened and occurred each and every day within the period of time that God takes to create the heaven and the earth, so we can prove that the Bible is true because of Genesis 1:1 in the beginning. We can also prove it because of proof of sciences. We can prove that the Bible is true because of the proof of prophecy. We can prove that the Bible is true by people who lived during this time, during the time of God and during the time of Jesus. And during the proof, we can prove it through the proof of historians, through the proof of historians. How, the next question might be, do I read the Bible for better understanding? How do I read this Bible? I've heard many people say, "I've tried to read the Bible, but it's confusing. There are words I don't understand. There are words I can't pronounce." That's all of us. Amen? There are words. So how can I have a better understanding? The first thing I want you to remember is that when you read this Bible, before you read it, always pray. We pray and we're asking God for understanding. Amen? So you pray before you read the Bible. Number two, you ask God for help and understanding. Number three, get yourself a Bible that you believe you can understand. Some Bibles are, there are so many different variations of the Bible that some are much clearer to read and understand or comprehend than others. So get yourself a Bible. It's okay to go online and search, read through. It's okay when we're able to go out again to go to a biblical store and look through a different Bible, to find one that you feel you can understand. And then four, get into a Bible group study, amen, that whether it's one at your church, whether it's one in your neighborhood, whether it's one on Facebook, whether it's one that you're getting into in a small circle, but make sure that you are getting yourself into a Bible group. It's good to study with someone else. Reading by yourself, sometimes you don't get all of the understanding that you could possibly get if you were reading and studying with someone else. But beloved, the most important thing, again, is consistency. Yes, you certainly must pray before you read your Word. You certainly must ask God for understanding of His Word. You certainly must get a Bible that you believe you can understand. You certainly need to be in some type of a Bible study group. But number five, you need to be consistent, consistent that you are studying your Bible consistently. You don't just pick it up on the first Sunday and then you don't pick it up again until the fourth Sunday. You should be picking this Bible up and reading some type of scripture, be it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You must read consistently. And it would help you to be able to not just jump around the Bible, but to then try to study a complete lesson, a complete lesson, so you can get better understanding, amen, of what God's Word is. We won't know where you are if you tune into this Bible study one week, that Bible study another week, this Bible study a third week, this Bible study a fourth week. So try to be consistent so that you can get better understanding and know that something has been completed and that you're not operating in a partial Bible study. The next question you might ask is, how can I improve my Bible study? How can I improve it? That's a very good question. You can improve your Bible study. Again, one of the answers would be always to pray. Pray before you read the Word. Number two, you need to set a regular time each day to study the Word of God. A regular time. It can be for fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, or longer. That would be your decision. But if you're on your job and you have your Word, whether it's on your phone or you take a physical Bible, we all get a break. We all get a lunchtime, a lunchtime break. So you can take time to do it during your break or your lunchtime if you're working, because even if you're working at home, you still are entitled to a break and lunch. You can set a time if your day is very, very hectic. You can just get up fifteen minutes earlier in the morning and study early in the morning while your mind is fresh. You can also study in the evening before you go to bed and as you're reading and studying the Word. But it's going to help improve your Bible study. So in the AM or the PM, on your break, on lunch, or when you just have a few moments. If you're trying to be consistent, it will help you to get a pattern, so to speak, as to when you are studying God's Word. Number three, as I said, whatever you're studying, try to complete it in a certain amount of time. Try to complete it. So whether you are studying and the Word of God, you just make sure that you don't read just one verse of something. It's always good when you're studying to read verses before that scripture, and it's certainly good to read verses after that scripture. Number four, use any scripture tools or aids that you have to help give you clarity. There are tools today. You can go on the website, Get Tools. You have your Bible. There are some tools in the back called the Concordance that you can study. There are certain Bibles that will give you supplemental or additional scriptures that you can look up, because if you're not sure what that word says, as you look in the back, there will be several scriptures that you can refer to to help give you clarity of the Word of God. And then, number five, make your Bible study time a priority. Make your Bible study time a priority. It's sometimes like some people do in their tithes and offerings. For tithes and offerings, sometimes we give God what's left, and we should not be giving Him our leftovers, but we should be giving Him our first fruit. So we need to make our Bible study time a priority. Amen? Make it a priority. Well, I hope some of those tidbits were helpful in the studying of the Bible, how you can improve your Bible study and the things that you can learn more, because the more you learn of God, the more you will want to know. He says, "We hunger and thirst after righteousness." But hallelujah, look at the blessing. The blessing says, "And they shall be filled." Amen? And that comes from Matthew 5 chapter, which is called and referred to as our Beatitudes. So today, for Bible Notes sake, we know that the Beatitudes are found in the book of Matthew, the fifth chapter. And this is so very interesting, because in Matthew the fifth chapter, it says, "Then Jesus went up to the mountain, and He fixated Himself, and He opened His mouth," according to Matthew 5, "and He taught them saying..." And He begins the Beatitudes of blessed awe. Amen? And that will be a Bible study for another time. But I just want you to know that the Beatitudes are found in Matthew the fifth verse, fifth chapter. I want you also to know today that the Lord's Prayer of what we consider and have said through the years as the Lord's Prayer is found in the book of Matthew, found in the book of Matthew, the sixth chapter, beginning with the ninth verse. And I'd like to say today that in some cases today, we are almost cheating our children and grandchildren in not teaching them the Lord's Prayer. If we say we love the Lord and we want our children to have certain morals and beliefs, it's our job to teach them. And even though we might not be able to go and attend Sunday School now, we have our Bibles. So it's your job to teach your children. And prayerfully, you have some books in your home. If not a Sunday School book, you can go right to my favorite store, The Dollar Store, get yourself some biblical books and read them to your children, so you are still teaching them biblical stories that will help carry them for the rest of their lives. So Matthew 6, verse 9 says, "After this manner, therefore pray ye, 'Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven.' Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for Thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever.'" Amen? So if you're taking time out, take time to teach your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. We have to pick up the slack today and allow our children to know the Word of God. We have to allow our children to know that we serve a risen Savior who is able to do anything but fail. We have to help and allow our children to know that we serve a God who's able to do exceedingly, above and abundantly anything we think or ask. We must teach our children. Too long we wait for others to teach our children, when God, in fact, gave our children fathers and mothers who should be the greatest teachers of all to their own siblings. So if you did not know where the scripture was on what we consider and call the Lord's Prayer, then you see that it is in Matthew, the sixth chapter, verses 9 through 13. I also want you to write today, many of you have heard them say, "The Great Commission." Well, the Great Commission is found in that same book of Matthew. It is found in the 28th chapter. And if we take a look at that, in the 28th chapter, verses 19 and 20. Many of our missionaries use this as their mission statement. Many of our churches use it as their mission statement or models for their churches. But in chapter 28, chapters, verses 19 and 20, it's called "The Great Commission," because they are commissioned. God, this is where the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ commissions us to go out and to do this. Amen? I want to just read the 18th verse as it leads into the 19. And it says, "And Jesus came and spake unto them, saying, 'All power is given unto Me in heaven and in earth.'" Here's the commission. "Go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you.'" And here's where He gives us a blessing, a blessed assurance. "And lo, I am with you always, even unto the end of the earth." God commissions us to go into the world, into the highways and byways. He's teaching us, He's telling us to teach all nations. So if some of us have problems or hung up with certain people and you say you love God, you need to read this scripture again, because God is love. And they that worship Him, we've got to worship Him in spirit and in truth. He's telling us that we have to love, that we've got to go out to all of these nations, and we need to baptize, we're teaching them, we're baptizing them in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, and we're teaching them to observe all of the commandments and their repentance, observe the commandments of God. Amen? And then He gives us that assurance. He's saying, in other words, "Don't worry, because lo, I am with you." We just can't stay in the church. We have to go outside of the church, and we must minister to the people of God. They might not look like us. They might not smell like us. They might not walk like us. They might not talk like us. They might not live like us. But it's our job to go and teach them and to baptize them. And then, of course, we have to love them in the interim, knowing, because the greatest commandment of all is to love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy mind, and with all thy soul. And the second is like unto it, to love thy neighbor as thyself. Remember, lo, I'm with you always. He's with us through your sickness. He's with us through your financial situation. He's with us through this pandemic. He's with us through the loss of job. He's with us when we lose our homes. He's still with us. But we have to trust and believe that God will bring us out. I want to say to you that there were, hallelujah, there were ten plagues in Israel. The ten plagues, I'm sorry, were in Egypt. And these plagues are found in the book of Exodus, chapters seven through 12. These plagues or disasters were forced on Egypt by God of Israel in order to force Pharaoh to allow the Israelites to depart from slavery. There were ten plagues or ten disasters. Those plagues were water turning into blood. The second was frogs. The third, lice. The fourth, flies. The fifth, sickness of cattle. The sixth, boils on men and animals. The seventh was hail or hailstorm. The eighth was locusts. The ninth was darkness for three days and nights. And the tenth was the death of the firstborn child. Beloved, information that I wanted you to have, information that I wanted you to know, and as we close, just one more point, that there were judges of Israel. Fourteen of those judges were men. One of those judges... One of those judges was a woman. Amen? Her name was Deborah or Deborah. As we close this morning, I want us to be in prayer for our sisters and our brothers. Our sisters and brothers are everybody that we are in contact with. I want you to pray for our nation, our world, pray for our country. Pray for those that are in leadership, amen? Pray for each other as we go day by day. And I leave you with this thought this morning. This thought that came to me early this morning from a very, very dear friend. And this thought says that even though you might have clouds in your life right now, and that's been all of us at some point or time, even though we might have clouds in our lives right now, just remember, the sun, S-O-N, still shines. Hallelujah. God bless you today. Your assignment, read the first book of Psalms because we are starting our new chapter in the book of Psalms. Psalms, 150 Psalms with an S. But we are going to read Psalm 1 for next week. We begin the book of Psalms. God bless you today. Try to put a smile, a positive smile, on someone's face. God bless you. We love you to life. See you on Sunday, 11 o'clock, live on this Sunday. We have a special treat for you on this Sunday. So you don't want to miss it. 11:00 AM, live this Sunday. God bless you.